Okay, I'm going to call the Planning Commission to order tonight. And we're going to start with our flag salute with, where are we? With Bob, Bob Hegel.
Join me in the flag salute, hand over your heart, and with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, I think. Going to have you close the doors, but maybe not. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and have a roll call, please. Denise.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Turley Trejo.
I'm the one that doesn't rhyme. Solis, Ruiz, I like that. Okay. Awesome, we're all here. So do we have, Denise, do we have any public comments that are not on agendized items?
The city. We're trying to make that determination right now. There's clear that some are on public hearing items, but maybe we need to just clarify that for the record. So if we can bring over the ones that we think might just be public comment items, and let's clarify that.
Okay. Should we sing a song or do something else? Ruiz, Solis.
If you'd just give us a moment.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to thank all you people for coming tonight. We don't usually have a crowd like this, so we appreciate it.
This is the CIP. So the ones that we, no, this is three CIP, three CIP. Okay, so there's only, there's one that's clearly just a regular public comment, and the other one says Los Fanchito Street Development, Steven Benavides. Is that, is this going to be an item for the public hearing on the capital improvement program consistency finding? Okay, so we'll hold this until that item comes up. So we only have one non-public hearing comment. Which, so that one's not part of the CIP? Okay, it is. I'm sorry. So then, yes, we're holding this for the public hearing. Okay.
Okay, so this, this one. Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, this is exciting. All right. I'm going to go ahead and. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the Commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. This is for public comments. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the Commission Secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the Commission Secretary. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. I have one public comment that's not on an agendized item is, and the name I have is Slim. Is Slim here? I didn't, I didn't think he was here. Okay. So, all right, we're good there. Then we're going to go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes, excuse me, is provided for members of the public to address the Commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the Commission Secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the Commission Secretary. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And I'm going to be reading that three times tonight. That's awesome. That'll be great. Okay. So on our consent calendar, we have the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Honorable Chair, we also have two items on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar. A motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have on the consent calendar the minutes and also the Director's Hearing summary report. So I need a motion for both of those, please.
Thought I just, make the motion that we do both.
Okay.
Both items on the consent calendar. We approve it. That's the motion.
In a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Motion by Gary and a second by Adam on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Does it pass 5-0?
Right.
No, I have to abstain.
Abstain. For?
I was not at the last meeting.
You would, you would abstain from the, probably from the, because you recused yourself. Unless you went back and reviewed everything, I would abstain from minutes.
I would like to abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so we have 3-0 on that. Two, two, one absent, one abstention.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. All right. Okay. All right, so. On our item number three is business. The General Plan Consistency Review of the Proposed Draft Fiscal Years 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Program, Long Range Project Number LR23-0139. And we have Katie tonight on that. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. Today I will be presenting the Capital Improvement Program General Plan Consistency Review for fiscal years 2024 to 2028. Just a little background. Section 65403 state law requires that the Planning Commission review and provide comments to the City Council regarding conformity of the Capital Improvement Program, known as CIP, with the adopted general plan. Planning Commission's role is to review the CIP and determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. There are five project categories totaling 104 projects for this five-year period. And the five categories include circulation, infrastructure, parks and recreation, housing, and projects funded by community facilities district bonds. And the total projected cost of these projects is just a little over $818 million. There are 23 circulation projects proposed that include interchange improvements, traffic safety and enhancements, as well as maintenance and rehabilitation work. And staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the circulation, growth management, public facilities, air quality, and community design elements of the adopted general plan. And the staff report indicates these specific goals and policies of the general plan. There are 56 infrastructure projects, one big one being the comprehensive general plan update. Other projects include enhancements and improvements to the bike lanes and trails, Old Town sidewalk improvements, and citywide safety lights and signal communications upgrades. There will also be new infrastructure projects that include the Old Town Parklets Program, Marietta Creek improvements, and citywide utility undergrounding, and several, several public safety infrastructure projects that include fire station improvements and renovations. And staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the land use, circulation, open space conservation, growth management, public facilities, public safety, community design, air quality, and economic development elements of the adopted general plan. There are 18 parks and recreation projects. These projects include the design and construction of pickleball courts at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, the splash pad and shade structure conversion project at the Community Recreation Center, playground equipment enhancements, and safety surfacing, and more. These projects also include several renovations and repairs to existing parks and recreation facilities, such as the Mike Nagar Community Dog Park renovation, the flood control channel reconstruction and repair, and the Ronald Reagan Sports Park hockey rink renovation. And staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the open space conservation, community design, growth management, public facilities, and air quality elements of the adopted general plan. Moving forward to housing projects. There are four affordable housing projects that consist of the Habitat for Humanity Project, the Los Haciendas Project, Vine Creek, and Uptown Temecula Project totaling 143-plus units. Uptown is still to be determined, so. And staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the land use and housing elements of the adopted general plan. Lastly, there are three projects funded by community facilities district bonds, which include the Butterfield Stage Road Extension, the Nicholas Road Extension Improvements, and Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation. Staff has reviewed the general plan and determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the circulation and open space conservation elements of the adopted general plan. Staff has reviewed the draft fiscal years 2024-2028 CIP projects and has defined it as not a project under the Secret Guidelines Section 15378B4 and is exempt under Secret Guidelines Sections 15061B3 and 15262. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making the finding of consistency with the general plan for the proposed draft fiscal years 2024-2028 CIP, and make a finding of exemption under Sections 15378B4, 15061B3, and 15262 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And this concludes my presentation. Available for any questions, and we also have Amir Attar, the Engineering Manager, for any project-specific questions.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. At this time, we'll have questions from my fellow Commissioners. For staff, Adam?
Yep, thanks, Katie. Just one question. You highlighted, and obviously there's more in the full agenda report. The Marietta Creek Regional Sports Park, that's the large one proposed on Jefferson?
Correct.
Okay, and that's part of this one here. Okay. Thank you.
No? Gary?
Yeah. Katie, just a quick question of the flood control project. Where, is that citywide, or is it a specific channel, or?
Amir could speak to that one.
Good evening. We've actually done a study a number of years ago on three sites. We did the, what's called Friendship Park now, which used to be called Polo Park. So we protected the soccer field from, you know, the Temecula Creek flooding. The next project that we're going to undertake is the channel within Mike Nagar Park. So we're going to look at what can we do. We, in the study that we did a number of years ago, they recommended using grip rods, you know, along the sides. So we're going to have to revisit that with the resource agencies. But that's going to be the, the next site that we're going to look at. The third site, after we finish this one, is, I believe it's the Lone Canyon Creek that we're going to look at.
Thank you, Amir. I just wanted to get familiar with the locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, I have a few questions. So, and this actually might be a question for Ron. So the progress on the Phase Two French Valley, can you talk to that, or Amir?
We've actually just, you know, started construction. We're about a month into it.
I know, I can see a lot happening, though, already.
Yeah, so they, they cleared, you know, the area where the, you know, where the improvement is going to take place. There's going to be a flyover. Actually, that's the big, you know, part of this project. There's going to be a flyover that's going to go over the 215 and land on the 15. So to eliminate the weaving movement that's actually causing the, the problem right now. So the contractor is well underway, you know, in construction. They're doing a lot of work, you know, night work. So they're, you know, doing the clearing and preparing those areas that's going to add the two lanes, which are the CD lanes, to the, you know, the east side of the freeway.
Right.
Yes. So this, we expect, based on the schedule, completion is going to be in about two years. So April, May, and 2025.
Okay. Great. Before I do my questions, Fernando, do you have some questions?
The four housing projects that are part of the CIP, are all those projects already approved?
Except they are in some form of development agreement. The Habitat for Humanity on Pujols, Vine Creek was shown there. That's already been approved. It's in construction. I believe the other one was Los Haciendas. That one also. So most of them, but there was one outstanding one that is not approved at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. On the, I think it's a question I asked before, but on the landscaping for 79 South that has been finished, but there's no really landscaping there yet. Can you speak to that?
We are actually just finalizing the plans and the specification for this project. And we received authorization from the City Council to go out to bid for construction. So we're going to go out to bid shortly, and we're going to be normally between the time we bid the project until we hit the ground, you know, for construction is about three months. So we're probably looking at sometime, you know, September, October for a start.
Awesome. That'll be great. Okay, then I had a question on the auto mall wayfinding signs. This is a new project.
Yes, we've been working with a firm called Brand Assassins. They have helped us with the Old Town wayfinding signs, as well as the auto malls. So we have some concepts that they have provided to us. And so next steps are, number one, economic development. We'll need to get that in front of the actual auto dealerships sometime in the fall. And then it'll be taken to a subcommittee level to basically approve the concepts and kind of how the look of it, the aesthetics of these wayfinding signs are going to be. So that's actively being worked on project right now.
And that's for the auto mall on Inez, and then further down also?
It'll be on Inez, and then we are also looking at possibly one sign near Mercedes. So the northern part of Inez, towards the city limits. But one for the Mercedes, Audi, and two dealerships to be determined.
Okay. And then, let's see. This is not a question, but I'm so excited that the project is complete with the lights. All the LED lights changed in the city. I was here when we started it. That was so, so cool to see that finished. And then the CRC? Did you want to do that right now?
We can. The CRC. Pat Thomas brought that to our managers' meeting this morning. There has been some hiccups with the contractor. When I say hiccups, there are, it's an extensive punch list for things that really need to be put into better shape as far as what Temecula would deserve. And so that's going to be actively worked on with the contractor. And Pat is working with TCSD to determine, what does that mean for the original open date, which was supposed to be June 19th for the day camp and everything that starts? So I think what you'll see is regardless of the direction that they go, if that means that there may be tents for the day camp, that's a possibility. But the locker rooms will be open, but probably accessed from the pool area only.
The locker rooms will be open now?
Yes. Yeah, but it'll be from the pool area only. And then some items still need to be worked on as far as a punch list goes. I don't know if you have it.
Yeah, just, just to add, the contractor is working diligently to try and finish before the 19th. They've added hours to, you know, to the days, and they're going to be working next weekend, and, you know, if necessary, the following weekend. So there is going to be an attempt to finish, if not all, but most of the punch list items. And if there are certain things that, you know, are unfinished, we have to evaluate if we can, you know, let the patrons into the building while they finish these items or not. But like Ron said, we also are going to have a contingency plan in case, you know, it's not finished by that date, where, you know, they don't have tents and these sort of things.
Good. Thank you. I, I've had a lot of people asking about that. So that was my question. Then I was looking at the Interstate 15 branding and visioning improvements, saying that this is a new project. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so a number of years ago, the city worked with Caltrans and Visit Temecula Valley were also involved in that to try and develop, you know, a plan to beautify the I-15 corridor within the city of Temecula limit. So there were some concepts, you know, that were developed. And the city want to move forward right now with, you know, it's, it's like, overall, it's like a $65 million project.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, you're talking about the whole city limit within the I-15 corridor. And it talks about doing concept at every interchange, whether it's a, you know, a balloon-type thing or anything that tells people you're in Temecula. So this is a long-range, you know, project. What we're going to do in the next couple of years is to focus in one area and try to develop plans for it. And then we can, you know, go and seek the funds to implement that, that phase of the project.
Okay. All right. I just know I'd probably get some questions on that. And then the Parklets, that's also a new project. Is that in the design phase?
I can speak to that one.
Oh, good.
Hi.
Hi. The Parklets is actually still in its preliminary stages. We're working with a consultant. We just recently had a kickoff with some staff. So I don't know if Matt wants to speak to anything, but it is still preliminary.
Yeah, we're right at the beginning of the process.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and I know, I think I had talked to, so I'm looking at the pedestrian signal equipment. Oh, actually, the lights, I'm not looking at that. Where is, where the lights being re-timed and everything in the city? I was talking to Pat about that. Is that part of this CIP also?
Yeah, well, we've received several HSIP grants, you know, and so each of them have a different aspect with regards to traffic. Some are going to be PED upgrades. Some are going to be the signal timing. Signal timing is undergoing right now on a previous HSIP that was awarded three years ago, I believe. And so the signal timing is being currently done by STC Consulting, and they're doing the corridors such as Temecula Parkway, Rancho California Road, Butterfield, all of our major arterials. And so that should be wrapped up here shortly because that is just about complete.
That'll be awesome. That'll be great. Okay, and then I know, I think. And then what about the skate park? What's the timing on that?
We've actually just started, you know, talking with consultants about revamping that, that whole, you know, skate park. So we're still in the early stages in determining what exactly we need to do instead of, you know, those concrete ramps that, that we have there. There are some new technologies, I guess, and new features that can be added. You know, we're looking, you know, like initially, we thought about just, you know, breaking it and hauling everything. But now, you know, there, there are other opinions of, you know, looking to accommodate some new features and make it, you know, a modern skate park based on what's happening right now around the country.
So what are they, what are the skaters using now? What are they, are they able to?
It's still open.
They're still using it?
Yeah, it's still open.
But when it's during construction, they won't be able to, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know, we're probably looking at, if I have to guess, probably another year until, you know, we actively make construction.
Okay. Thank you. And then the pickleball courts, they're starting next year? Is that what I understand?
Yes, it is well in design, you know, and, because we went through a period of going to subcommittees trying to decide on location. And then a number of courts, and then, you know, they needed more money. So the city is appropriating additional money with this CIP budget so we can do the 17 courts at the old pit, which is now the pit in Ronald Reagan Sports Park. So we're well into the, you know, the design. We passed the conceptual stage.
Okay. Great. And Adam had already asked about the Marietta Creek. I was going to ask about that. And then also on playground equipment enhancement. This was a park that I asked about before, the one that's across from Jackson Elementary. Is anything being done on that one? I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I can find out.
Yeah, because that one is, like, most of the parks have been enhanced and redone, and that one looks the same.
I know, I know there are three park sites that are scheduled this upcoming year.
Okay. So maybe if you can just find out about that one for me, that'd be great. And I think that's all I had. Yes, Bob?
The pavement rehabilitation program.
Turn on your thing.
Several years ago.
Turn on your mic.
Several years ago, we had, we had a consultant review all of our roads and grade them. And so any of the work that's being done is done in, in that order. What I thought I read was that we're updating that list. Is that correct? Yeah?
That is correct. The, on, on normal circumstances, we have to do this every five years.
Okay.
So the last time the roads were assessed in Temecula was in 2017. So we're due to reassess the roads. And we're going to hire a consultant that they're going to go out. Look, obviously, between 2017 and now, we did a lot of work on rehabbing, you know, pavement throughout the city. So they're going to have to reevaluate, you know, what, what the state of the streets right now. And based on that, we're going to develop another priority list so we can rehab the street that needed to be.
So the process will be relatively the same. So it's being done, that list will be done based upon condition and no other politics or anything else involved?
That's correct. So what happened between 2017 and now, every time we have a database, or so every time we do a project, we notice it. So it brings back the pavement, what's called the PCI or the Pavement Condition Index. It'll bring it up, you know, higher, so, you know, which indicate that the road is in good condition now. So we've been doing that throughout the, you know, the last few years. Every time we rehab a street, we update, you know, the conditions for it. So when the consultant we hire comes on board, they're going to look at, you know, what we've done, and then, you know, they'll evaluate the existing street. We have about 320 miles of streets in the city. So they're going to evaluate each and every one of them.
Okay, good. The last question I have is regarding the mall. Besides signage, I believe there was a, there's a traffic light that will be added to the, to the Ring Street. Am I correct? Is that private property that's owned by them?
That is, that is correct.
Are they paying for that work to be done? Or is any of that money coming from the city? Or is it from grants? Or where, where does it come from?
Okay, so originally, when the mall was developed, there was an agreement between the city and developer of the mall that the developer of the mall is going to contribute $2 million toward improvements to the Ring Road. Okay, internal improvement. So when that all said and done, they installed three traffic signals. There was one left, which is the one that's, you know, been the, the traffic signal is being installed right now. So out of that $2 million, what was left was about $45,000.
Okay.
So the developer or the mall, you know, owners are contributing $45,000 based on that agreement toward the signal. And the rest of the money is coming from the traffic signal fees that the city collects.
Right.
Yeah. Because the Ring Road, even though it's a private, you know, property, Yeah. Because the Ring Road, even though it's a private, you know, property, there is an agreement between the city and the mall that the city maintains the, like, the signals in the Ring Road.
Right. And we also, I know, police it as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, that's it. Thank you.
That's it. Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, so then I will go ahead and open the public hearing, but before I do that, I'm going to read.
Sure, and it's, just to clarify, it's not a public hearing item, but there is an opportunity for public comments.
Right, yeah, thank you. So members of the public may address the Commission on Business Items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the Commission's secretary, or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the Commission's secretary. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. So we should all have that memorized by now. So, yeah, so these are public comments on a business item. And there are 12 public speakers. I'm gonna open, right? Am I opening it? No? Yes? No?
It's technically no, but that's fine.
It feels better somehow.
It's not a big deal.
Okay, so appreciate all of you being here. I have 12 speakers. It looks like all of you are speaking on the same item, so if you hear someone saying the same thing that you did, you know, maybe, if you wanna say the same thing again, that's fine, too. But just so that we can hear everybody. So let's start with Stephen Benavides, followed by Margaret Benavides.
My name is Steve Benavides.
Yeah, turn on the mic. There's, there you go.
He just turned it off.
Oh.
I think you're good now.
Hello?
No.
I've lived in Irvine for 15 years.
Strip between Santiago and, and the turnabout. My house is directly across from the sand mine that is actively going on now, on the, in the middle of that area. I have two issues that I want to address. One is the traffic. I've lived there for 15 years. 15 years ago, I lived in a residential equestrian community. That has changed greatly because of the increase in traffic and the poor planning that was done by the regional managers. And we now have people running through Los Ranchitos to take shortcuts to get to their houses in other parts of the city that don't live in our neighborhood and have dramatically affected the quality of the life that we have there. The cars regularly get over 100 miles an hour by the time they get to my house. I live right where the horses cross on the main horse trail. I have lost two mailboxes to high-speed errant drivers. My neighbor across the street, Gilbert Schultz, has lost one mailbox. And I have had the large battery-powered, solar-powered signs that regulate the horse crossing there. Even that has been destroyed by cars losing control speeding down Inez late at night. So I also have to deal with the police pulling over drunk drivers. They come out of, out of Santiago, they turn right on Inez, come down Inez, they don't stop at that light. The police officers sit in the, under the tree across the street from that, and they pull them over right about the time they get to my house. And of course, I have to watch the blue lights and the, and the red lights, and the tow truck come haul the guy off. So the, the traffic has become terrible. Now, I'll tell you now, I love traffic. The traffic in front of my house comes to a stop every day. It's bumper to bumper. And that pleases me greatly. It pleases my wife, because the people in the car appreciate our roses. It pleases me, 'cause they're not going 100 miles an hour and endangering the, my neighbors, you know, my, two sides of my house have the horse trail on it. So there are horses on Inez all the time, and the traffic's become terrible. And my suggestion to you is not to make that road, to double the road. I think you should leave it a single road and lower the speed limit and retain the character of our neighborhood as an equestrian residential community. Now, the similar thing happened up on, on Red Hawk Drive. Red Hawk used to be one lane, they made it into two lanes, they raised the speed limit, and you had so many accidents up there, you had to cut it back down to one lane, and you lowered the speed limit. Well, you know, there's not any residential houses on Red Hawk. We have residential houses everywhere. And it is dangerous to pull onto Inez from my house at almost any time of day. So I'm happy to live in the place I have, I'm happy to live with the traffic, I'm glad that it has become slow, because if the traffic is slow, they're not going 100 miles an hour. And no matter what, we have been unable to get police help, and by the time they get to 100 miles an hour, they have trouble slowing down, and they end up going across the traffic circle and into my neighbor's yard and ruining his fences. So I, I desperately oppose to widening the road and making the traffic even faster, because they already have, there is no stop sign between Santiago and the, and the, and the roundabout. So they, they cruise through there at vast speeds, way over the speed limit. The other thing I'd like to address is the city owns a piece of property on Santiago that is bleeding sand. All that sand comes down that wash, and in, in, there's pictures here, and that, on the front page, is the wash going under my neighbor's driveway. When the sand goes up to the level of his driveway and hits his driveway, it jumps into the street and floods my house. And it's done that twice in the last 15 years, and it costs over $1,000 every time it happens for me to get a tractor to remove the sand from my...
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. To remove the sand from my horse pasture. So you cannot put, you cannot address a widening of that until you do something with the sand that's coming down from the city property that inundates my house, inundates Inez Road, and, and fills up, and is, is a flooding risk to the four homes that are affected that I have listed on this sheet.
Thank you.
So I'd like that addressed.
Thank you, your time's up.
In your consideration.
Thank you so much. Okay, and we have Margaret Benavides, followed by Jim Dykema. Dykema?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Benavides, and I live on Inez Road as well. I really do love it when the traffic slows down, because it's safer, just safer. I think that we're living in old, the old days. When we had traffic, we just made more roads. But now, with the current society that we're living in and the knowledge of global warming, I think we need to address it in a more modern way. I'm going to show you a bus. This is a model of a bus. These buses are made in a factory in China. My son was asked to go to the factory, and he did a report on the Chinese bus factory. We need more public transportation in Temecula. We have a lot of visitors. We like to have them go to Old Town and enjoy Old Town, but we don't want them getting in their cars and driving drunk. They need more public transportation, and it isn't just Lyft and Uber. It needs to be public, and it needs to be able to traverse many people through. We could work with Abbott to have them take the, the people who have their cars parked at the cars, at the car place spots, we could have them go there. CVS has one across the street from them. There's always traffic on Inez, because people are using it as a cross street. They need to find out that it's a slow street, it's a, it's a residential neighborhood, and that if they really want to get around Temecula, especially if they're a visitor, they would be more appropriately taken care of, including going to the wine country and enjoying our wine country, if we had more public transportation. And we didn't solve all of our problems by building more roads and making our community less safe, which is exactly what is planned for our community. So I just wanna plant that seed, and at one point, I know that Temecula had a Six Sigma Black Belt that worked for them. She was excellent. She was able to pull all the groups together and come up with very good, modern solutions to very complex problems. She did an excellent job with the library, for example. I recommend that we do something like that. But to just go along, to get along with, with an old plan that we used to have and do what we used to do is not going to work in the modern future of our community. We need the kids that go to the schools on Vallejo to be able to get home and to school safely without necessarily having their parents drop them off and pick them up. That's not new for a community. We need to address those issues. And so I recommend what China's doing, let's build more buses, or another modern equivalent of public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Jim Dykema, is that correct? No?
I, I believe that's me. I'm Jim Selsapur, Chairperson, Commissioners, thank you.
No, I, I think it, there's a Jim Dykema. Is that right?
Dykema, yeah.
Did I say that right? No?
I guess it wasn't me.
Good evening, my name is...
Pronounce your last name for me.
Dykema.
Dykema, yeah, okay.
Good evening, my name is Jim Dykema. I live at 29630 Vallejo Avenue. I have two items to discuss tonight, or questions that I have. One is the widening of Inez. If anybody lives in that area, they know that everybody comes off the freeway, goes over to La Paz, and go, and from there on, goes on Inez, going north. And most of those people, I think, are going to Marietta and places beyond, and they're just trying to get away from the freeway. So if you make the road wider, you're gonna get more traffic. The old saying, build it, and they will come. And it's ridiculous. I live on Vallejo between La Paz and Inez, on the, on the, the Inez on the parking ride side, 'cause, you know, you can use that same analogy both ways. I cannot get out of there during rush hour, going to La Paz trying to get out, or going up to Inez off Vallejo trying to get on there because of all the traffic. It's ridiculous. And then the speeds that they go on Inez are also incredible. I have horses. It's, you take your life in your own hands when you try to cross La Paz. And then, when you get over to Inez, oh, then it's, then it's game on. It's like, you know, you gotta watch out, 'cause they don't stop. They honk, they do everything. It's ridiculous. And I don't think it is responsible, planning, to just think about moving more traffic without thinking about the consequences. The unintended consequences of your decisions impact our quality of life. Also, I wanted, like to ask about the Vallejo Underground Utility Plan. Nobody said anything about that, and I was just curious what that involves, 'cause there's no above-ground utilities on the normal streets, just coming up through the electrical easement coming from the south to the north, but that's major transmission lines. Is that what they're talking about?
We'll, we'll have to answer that question when we're done with everyone.
Okay, that's fine. But I just wanna reiterate, the, the Inez planning keeps coming back. And I don't think it's responsible for you to widen the road and ask for more traffic. We have homes, we have horses. As an equestrian community, and if you want a big-city world, then move it to the other end of town. Widen 15. If you wanna put your money on something, widen 15. It's ridiculous going through Temecula. And that's why the, the, the traffic is so significant on Inez right now. I don't believe those people, most of them do not live in Temecula. They're just trying to get away from the slow traffic on the freeway. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, then we have Mark Laturnau, 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 I'm saying that wrong. It's French, Laturnau. And after Mark, we'll have Roland Martin. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you for the time this evening and for providing the opportunity for me to voice my opinion regarding any plans to widen Inez and Deportola Roads between Santiago and Margarita Roads. Old traditions and new opportunities. My main concern here this evening is safety. My name is Mark Laturnau, and I'm here tonight representing my family, who live with me in Los Ranchitos at 30425 Jedediah Smith Road in beautiful, lovely Temecula. I speak for my family as I state that we are vehemently against any projects which result in the further widening of Inez and Deportola Roads between Santiago and Margarita Road. We are also against increased posting, posting increased speed limits, and hope you would consider reducing the posted speed limits for Inez and Deportola Roads, as well as Jedediah Smith Road. In the spring of 2000, the United States Marine Corps transferred me and my family from Northern Japan to Camp Pendleton. Our search for a new home took us along the areas adjacent to Camp Pendleton, and we spent a week looking in Orange County, in North San Diego County, and finally found our home in Temecula, because of the old traditions and new opportunities, which we could feel in this community. We knew we had found our forever home. My wife and I were both born in California, as were our parents, and we've lived in Temecula longer than we've lived anywhere else. We're engaged in our community, we're active in local, national, and international organizations, volunteering at the Rose Haven, biweekly cleanup of Temecula Veterans Park, and activities at our church, to name a few. After I retired from an exciting career as a United States Marine, I started a small business in Temecula, and we employ several of our Temecula Valley community neighbors. Weekdays before 5:30, as we're driving to the gym on Inez and Deportola Road, we're often passed by people driving at speeds of 60 and 70 miles an hour and faster, who are in a rush to join their morning migration to work. I often catch up with them at the next controlled intersection, only to see them trying to overtake another driver. Later in the day, people honk their horns and wave fingers at us for pulling out or turning into our driveway, which is less than 200 feet from an all, four-way, all-stop intersection. It's clear that they are frustrated that I am interfering with their right to speed through our streets and communities. With increased traffic comes more pollution and trash. And consider the safety issues for runners, walkers, cyclists, people walking their dogs, people on horseback. Heck, just crossing the street at the four-way intersection often results in honking horns and near misses from irate drivers. People traversing in and through our community are already driving faster than the posted 40 and 45 mile an hours posted speed limit, and you know that creating a wider thoroughfare will only encourage and increase the speed, frequency, and lethality of the accidents that result in injuries and death. As happened to Deputy Creed, the San Diego County Sheriff's Deputy, who died in a single-vehicle off-duty accident on Deportola Road on a clear Saturday morning in January of 2020. Two months ago, a speeding driver crashed through bushes, trees, fence, and onto our front yard on a Saturday evening at 7:40 PM. Less than an hour later, there was a crash at the four-way intersection of Deportola, Inez, and Jedediah Smith Road. "Old traditions and new opportunities" is a great slogan, and the connection to our past is equally as important as our bridge to the future. Please, members, I implore you to protect our homes and our community, our equine traditions, our property values, and our city's history and heritage, for the enjoyment of the citizens of this great city of Temecula today and into the future. Please protect our quality of life in Temecula, protect our old traditions and new opportunities, and for safety, please oppose any widening of Inez and Deportola Roads and support the decrease in posted speed limits along those thoroughfares. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. God bless you.
Thank you, Mark. And Roland Martin? And after Roland, we'll have Donna Cole.
My name, I'm sorry. My name is Roland Martin. I live at 30030 Carrillo.
Welcome.
Okay. I've lived there three years. I didn't get up to date, I just found out about this yesterday, so I haven't had a chance really to do my homework. All I can tell you is what I see, and I agree with everybody else. Too much traffic, too fast. You can leave my house, there at Santiago, it'll take me 30 minutes to get down to Rancho California Road, 'cause it's just stacked up. Now, during the morning, it's not too bad. In the afternoon, it's a zoo. So, and, you know, that's my comment. Basically, I'm gonna abstain at this point. I think everybody else has said what you need to hear. So...
Thank you.
Hopefully, the City Council will see things are our way, and we'll go no further with it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, we have Donna Cole, and after Donna, we have Jennifer Van Meter. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. My name is Donna Cole, and my husband Greg and I live on La Paz Street at the Roundabout. We purchased our home because it was a large property, and the house sat back from the road. It seemed to be a very nice neighborhood with normal traffic. In the seven years that we have lived there, our home has had a total of, in front of our home, there has been a total of 24 accidents. 18 after the roundabout was put in, and 11 of those 18 have gone through our, I'm sorry, through our fence and onto our property, causing damage. Obviously, not normal traffic. A majority of the drivers have been intoxicated and tested over the legal limit. They are usually young, some military, on their way home from a night of drinking in Old Town Temecula, and driving above the speed limit posted on Inez, which is 45. Mileage signs are obviously ignored day and night. One young lady admitted to the police at 2:00 in the morning. One young lady admitted to the police, at two o'clock in the morning, that she was speeding at seventy miles an hour on Yenaz. She hit the roundabout at the center and launched into our fence. Her car came to arrest beside our property, and shortly after she exited, it burst into flames. The deputies and firemen that have responded to these incidents have always been apologetic, somehow thinking that their presence on our property at 3:00 AM is their fault. The fault lies within the poor planning of the roundabout, which is offset to the street. Most roundabouts sit in the center of the intersection. This one does not. Extra signs and directional street painting have recently been added, but something more than widening Yenaz to four lanes is desperately needed. Opening four lanes would just cause a raceway. People use La Paz and Yenaz as shortcuts to avoid the traffic on the fifteen and Temecula Parkway, as everyone else has said. From 2:30 on in the afternoon, the front of our house is blocked. You cannot get through. And the, um, the honking, because people do not know how to go around the roundabout, is crazy. I mean, we hear honking all day, all night. One deterrent to fast traffic would be speed bumps on La Paz and down the street on Yenaz before the roundabout. Another roundabout is proposed for Jedidiah Smith, and I hope the people on the four corners are aware of the extra noise, backed-up traffic, and possible accidents occurring on their property. Introducing more traffic to an already congested residential neighborhood will not fix the problems that Los Ranchitos residents are experiencing. Walking our dogs or using the horse trails and crossings have become a take-your-chances event. Entering and exiting our driveways are also scary at times, when traffic is backed up or traveling at a high speed. Being rear-ended by someone not paying attention and speeding is a constant thought of mine. Before coming to Temecula, I worked for the San Diego County Sheriff's Office in the COPS unit. COPS stands for Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving. Our Office of Seven Deputies, along with the community, worked together at town hall meetings, planned neighborhood events, and opened discussions to solve ongoing neighborhood problems as a collective unit. There are more resolutions when people come together. I have witnessed this firsthand, and I know it works. Maybe it's time for something like a COPS unit to start up in Los Ranchitos, and yes, I would be glad to help. As our council members, it is up to you to decide to help our neighborhood with city traffic issues, and yes, possibly even save a life.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay. It is my greatest fear that someone will needlessly die on my property. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak as a representative for the Los Ranchitos Homeowners Association.
Thank you. Thanks, Donna. Um, Jennifer Van Meter, followed by Shannon Ryan.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Hi.
Uh, my name's Jennifer Van Meter, I live at 30235 Yenaz Road. I've lived in Temecula for eleven years, and in Los Ranchitos for almost five years. I chose Temecula, and more specifically, Los Ranchitos, for the small-town feel and the opportunity to own land and have farm animals. I moved from Duluth to Los Ranchitos for the equestrian community and close proximity to town. I'm disturbed by the increasing number of cars cutting through what should be a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. Yenaz and Deportola has one of the highest speed limits on city streets, and is the highest I've seen in a residential neighborhood. It's even higher than the speed limits in most of the local business districts here in Temecula. For example, Jefferson's speed limit is forty miles an hour. There are fifty-three homes with driveways that enter and exit onto Yenaz and Deportola between Santiago and Margarita. That's within a two-and-a-half-mile stretch. Those homes have no other option but to enter and exit their driveways on Yenaz and Deportola. The risk of being either rear-ended or T-boned entering and exiting our driveways is of great concern to me. I feel like I'm playing Russian roulette, coming and going from my own home. When I need to pull out with a trailer or my RV, you can forget about it. It can take upwards of fifteen minutes during off-peak hours to safely exit the driveway with an RV or a trailer. Find me another residential neighborhood with that number of driveways exiting onto a street with a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. Residential districts, per the vehicle code, are twenty-five miles per hour. We're currently twenty miles an hour over that, which is almost double. It's not safe. People that do not live in our neighborhood, drive through our neighborhood, not obeying the speed limits, and pass in the, in the turning lane, to where, if you're, if you're trying to turn left into your driveway, somebody could come right out from behind a car and not see you, to pass in that turning lane and hit you. Widening that road is only gonna increase that risk. There's a six-lane highway conveniently located just south of us, that people could use to go that way, but no, because they're trying to cut over to Margarita. Adding another lane would invite more traffic and further increase the speed at which people drive through our neighborhood. The speed and volume of traffic on Yenaz and Deportola makes it difficult to safely ride a horse, bike, or walk your dog in the Los Ranchitos trail system. This community has long-established equestrian trails for its residents to enjoy, but with seven horse crossings between Santiago and Margarita on a street with a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, where most people drive much faster than that, it's not safe to cross the street on your horse. Only two of the horse crossings even have signals, to which I guarantee ninety percent of the drivers don't pay attention because they're moving too fast to notice. I'm strongly opposed to the widening of Yenaz, La Paz, and Deportola roads through our neighborhood. Widening these roads would only further deteriorate our quality of life and further disturb what was intended to be a peaceful community for equestrian lovers. Please reduce the speed limit on Deportola and Yenaz between Santiago and Margarita to protect the quality of life expected in our community, and allow us to use our equestrian trails and enter and exit our driveways safely. I see people driving over sixty miles per hour daily, and passing in the turning lane. I would love to see the speed reduced to thirty to thirty-five miles per hour, and have speed humps installed between Santiago and Margarita as a safety buffer for the equestrian traffic and residents entering and exiting their driveways. You, as our elected representatives, are our only hope to protect our quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, Sha- Shannon Ryan? Not sure I'm saying that right. I couldn't read it, I'm sorry. And after, it's not Shannon? Is Shannon correct?
Yes.
Oh, Ryan, is that right?
Flynn.
Oh, Flynn, okay. Shannon Flynn-
Hard to write with a bad finger.
And after Shannon, we have LaSalle Degrave.
So, hi, I'm Shannon Flynn. I live at 30395 Cabrillo Avenue. Um, it's a block off of the Yenaz-Deportola roadway. Um, I would reiterate the volume and the speed issues. I think, especially coming out of, um, San- off Santiago and coming into the roadway, you stop from the light, you go up to forty-five, and then you come to the roundabout, and you're very shortly before the roundabout, you're supposed to be at fifteen, and it's too many changes of speed limits in too short a time from a practical perspective, I think. But overall, speed and volume is a problem. Today, coming here, it was bumper-to-bumper traffic. Temecula Parkway was wide open. So, people are using our road through our neighborhood, um, instead of using Temecula Parkway. Um, I was a little upset about the vote you took at the beginning in terms of the, um, general plan, the, um, CIP being consistent with the general plan, because my understanding of the general plan is that crosstown traffic wasn't to be encouraged through neighborhoods, and that's exactly what's happening in our neighborhood. And, um, I believe if the speed limit was adjusted down, there would decrease crosstown traffic. If you drive from, um, on either direction, and you go slower than the speed limit, you're honked at, you're given the bird, and people, as Jennifer said, pass on the turn lane, which, as she said, is seriously dangerous. If someone's in that lane trying to turn in their driveway, they could be hit in either direction without any warning. Um, thank you, Ron, for doing the cross, the horse-trail crossings that you've done, I wanted to say that. And I know we have some plans for others, and some other workarounds in the meantime, and that's helpful. But riding horses on the trail is very difficult. If you stand even at a signalized crossing and wait for people to go by, they're more apt to wave to you rather than stop. You could be standing there with your hand out, asking people to stop, and they just wave or honk, with no idea that it's, might, maybe might cause your animals some difficulty. Um... It is a residential street. There's a large number of driveways there. Some of them are twenty-three, twenty, thirty feet apart from each other. Some of them are three or four hundred feet apart from each other. But there's well over fifty, and probably closer to seventy-five, homes on that street. It's a residential street, and almost every other residential street in Temecula, the speed limit is twenty-five. So, I think something needs to be done about that. That's, that's it, wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. LaSalle Degrave, followed by Denise Todd. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Vice President, and Commissioners. Um, I'm here regarding the future widening of La Paz, and also eventually Deportola and Yenaz. I've read, I've read through the Bike Master Plan, which talks about widening Deportola and Yenaz. Um, I know right now, the more immediate, uh, discussion is on the La Paz widening. I've met with council, my councilwoman, and also city, city staff on this issue. I'm very concerned about it. I grew up in Temecula and have been in this valley since 1989. I currently live in the Los Ranchitos community, and actually live on Deportola. My family loves the equestrian community, which is one of the reasons that we chose to live in that neighborhood. Um, but I do have huge concerns about adding more cars through an already congested neighborhood, as you've heard today from my neighbors. This is a huge challenge. Um, to safely get in and out of my driveway, it, it's almost like you have to cross your fingers, close your eyes, and, and hit the gas pedal. It, it is really frightening. I have a teen daughter right now, and I can't let her make a left turn out of my driveway, because you've got cars just whizzing by on a blind turn. And you have to get into the center divider, and then try to get over, and it's very, very dangerous. Um, I understand that the city's proposing this project to reduce traffic congestion and increase safety, but widening the road, um, on La Paz is only gonna encourage drivers to cut through our neighborhoods at speeds above the limit, like you've heard tonight. And, um, I really would like to discourage you from encouraging council to move anything forward that's going to support the expansion of these roads in our residential neighborhood. Please consider instead traffic calming measures that would encourage cars to cut through our neighborhood. We, we've been reported, there's been twenty-three reported vehicle accidents tonight. I've heard a higher number, which is really alarming. Um, and some which have damaged properties in our neighborhood. I encourage you to take action to reduce the posted speed limit in our community, and help make our roads safer, not busier. Uh, my family strongly opposes the widening of Yenaz, Deportola, and La Paz to four lanes. We've, we've had enough issues with cut-through traffic and drivers speeding through our neighborhood, and street widening is only gonna make it worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, LaSalle. Denise Todd, followed by Neil Ziff. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Denise Todd, I live at 30110 Deportola Road. It's two houses, um, east of the intersection of Jedidiah and Deportola. And I'm gonna repeat what everybody's saying here tonight, because it's a common problem, the speed and the traffic. Most of the people going through our neighborhood, like, like, if you heard, um, are not residents. And I've been honked at trying to turn right into my driveway, because I slow down, I slow down too much for the drivers. And it's impossible for me to make a left-hand turn in and out of my driveway in the mornings and in the early, uh, early evenings. I've also witnessed, as people have told you tonight, how people pass, if you're going forty or forty-five miles an hour, they will pass you because you're going the speed limit, you're not going fast enough for them. And as you heard tonight, about all the accidents that have been happening on La Paz, and Yenaz, and Jedidiah, and Deportola. Um, and I think it is very unsafe for those people who do own horses to ride the horses in our neighborhood. It's, it's very dangerous. And I am asking you to consider the safety of our residential neighborhood and implement traffic calming measures. Um, reducing the speed is, is huge. And consider, I heard speed bumps, but I heard about speed humps and rubber speed cushions that are designed to slow cars without affecting emergency response vehicles and their time. And maybe increasing police presence that helps slow down the traffic. And, um, the reduction of the speed limit will reduce the number of accidents and damage to properties, our properties, and hopefully reduce traffic on Yenaz and Deportola roads, and make our neighborhood a safer place to live. Widening La Paz, Yenaz, and Deportola will only increase traffic, speed, and accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Neil Ziff, um, followed by Jim Selsapore, something like that, sorry.
Commission members and staff, my name is Neil Ziff. I live at 43801 Coronado Drive. Our family has lived in Los Ranchitos for twenty-three years. Given the time allowance, I'll focus my comments on the issue of safety, and like everyone else, the idea of widening Yenaz-Deportola corridor between Santiago and Margarita, including La Paz and the short section of Jedidiah. You know, our association is the oldest in the city. On my first drive down Yenaz and Deportola, I knew that this was where I wanted to live. Our community represented all the good things I had heard about Temecula. When we moved here, we were on the edge of town. We're now in the middle of our city. We all understand the pressures that growth and development bring. The challenge is how we manage it, how you manage it for us. We need both to promote and control it. This holds true not only at a citywide level, but also within our community. It's why the association has allowed commercial development. It's also why we promoted the roundabout at La Paz, and the changing of the ingress egress at, uh, for the park and ride. No other community in our city faces the same challenges we do with regards to circulation. We are not a planned community in the same way that others are. Along the Yenaz-Deportola corridor, there are seventy-seven homes, sixty-eight primary driveways, sixteen auxiliary driveways. There are also twelve horse, uh, horse-trail crossings, and eight uncontrolled intersections. In my opinion, the problem is not of the volume of cars through our association. The advent of Google Maps and Waves has directed huge numbers of cars through our association, looking for a faster way through our city. As the city has grown, there is also a greater amount of crosstown traffic. The natural law of traffic flow is it will fill the pipe. You cannot manage this issue successfully if you are always pushing it to the point of failure. Eventually, with growth, it will always fail. The safety issue here is speed. You will not be able to control it. A second traffic lane will invite higher speeds. The irony is that during rush hours, at the beginning and end of the day, or when there is an issue on I-15, either north or south, our community is safer, because the traffic has to move slower. I would prefer to have to edge my way into a line of cars than worry about being mowed down by a speeding motorist. I would prefer that commuters drive through our community at a pace that they can enjoy it, and I can feel safe. We would prefer a permanent change to this issue in the new general plan. But at the very least, this issue should be tabled until such time as the Winchester flyover and the Western bypass are completed, so we can fully assess their impacts. This corridor is enjoyed by cyclists, runners, equestrians, and pedestrians. What a shame it would be to destroy it in this way. We would like to work with and not fight against the city to enhance this corridor and not enlarge it. It will be safer for all, and continue to show off the best attributes of our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Neil. And Jim.
Commissioners, Chairperson, thank you. My name is Jim Selsapore. I moved to, um, Temecula in 2018, and I brought my horses. And that's why I moved to Los Ranchitos. And I live, um, right on, uh, Yenaz and East Vallejo. And I have horses, and I ride them all- And I have horses, and I ride them all the time. And it's dangerous, and it's becoming more dangerous. I think this traffic circle made traffic faster. And widening it, we're just inviting tragedy. I mean, horses are, it's dangerous with horses. I ride them all the time. And, and the traffic is loud, and if the more traffic we have, the more incidents we're going to have. I can't even turn off my driveway, make a left off my driveway. I have to make a right and go around the corner just to be safe. And there are lots of, we, as we've heard today, a lot of my neighbors are having the same issue. And so widening it, widening the road is just inviting trouble. It's going to make more accidents, more cars. And, and I think we also have to really consider slowing traffic down. And how do you slow traffic down? By lowering the speed limit. And I think that's the only way. We live in a residential community. And to ask the Los Ranchitos community to take the brunt of people trying to get to the other part of town is unfair to us. It's unfair to the, the tax money that we put into this city and into the property taxes we pay and, and all the income we bring into the city as, as, in general. We're taking an unfair burden by taking all the risk. I, I have an insurance agency, and we talk about risk management. This is not risk management. We're asking for a lot of trouble here. And we have had people that die here on the road on Deportola, and there will be more if we expand it. So I think we just have to take a step back and be reasonable. And remember, there are other alternatives. We can push people out to the main highways, the ones that are designed for heavy traffic, the ones with the businesses on there. And someone said earlier, it's, it's during the rush hour, it's not so bad because people aren't going sixty miles an hour. And you're trying to make a right turn or a left turn out of your own property, which is really, really problematic. And when you add kids on bicycles or on horses or people walking their dogs down the road, which is a reasonable thing for people to want to do in a residential neighborhood. So I think I would ask that we not expand and also, or alternatively, consider lowering the speed limit to a reasonable twenty-five mile an hour that every other neighborhood in town has. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have anybody else that didn't fill out a speaker card that would like to speak before we end public comments? Come on up. If you'll just make sure and fill out a card when you're done.
Sharon, I'll be very brief because I'm going to say the same thing that everyone else has been saying. I'm Stacy Jakutis.
What was your last name?
Jakutis.
Jakutis. How do you spell that?
J.A.K.U.T.T.I.S. We live on Inez. We have the same issues that you've heard tonight. I guess the only different pointer that I would like to make is to ask you, please, I know we've all given you our opinions. I just want to ask you, please, to maybe drive through our neighborhood, try to turn into one of our driveways, consider if you had a trailer with horses or an RV, and just take a look before you decide to widen the road. And to also consider reducing the speed for all of those same reasons that everyone else did. Yes, we live there, so obviously this is our feelings. But you're the ones that have to make the decision. And before you make that decision, please educate yourselves and really take a look at what that, what happens on that road, because it is residential. It's not like any other neighborhood. It was here before anything else was here, and it was intended to be Temecula. And now it's become kind of a workaround as opposed to the original Temecula. So just, just asking you, please take a look. Okay?
Thank you, Stacy. Okay. All right. So, yes, did you want to come up? Sure. Oh, take your time, take your time. That's fine.
My name is Ron Barker, and I live at three oh two six oh Inez.
Ron Parker?
Ron Barker, B. Lichenboy.
Oh, Bar, Barker. Just make sure you fill out a slip before the night.
I'm a newbie. I've lived at that address for approximately three years. I would have to accept everything that these people said tonight as being true. I'm kind of amazed at the speed that is on, on the boulevard. And it should be reduced. Widening it, as they all said, would make it worse. It's kind of like, wow, did somebody put up a detour sign on the freeway? Because it just builds up. And I don't think the roundabout's going to work because if you're watching the traffic come from your left, it's going to build up off the main road. That will be backing up onto Seventy-Nine. So that might be a consideration because it, depending on time of day, it gets loaded on one side of it. So I just wanted to say, I would like to see the way it is. All of the comments tonight, they've been positive in terms of it should kind of stay the way it's been. So that's my comment. I'm too new, but I do see real problems, and I see the problems these people are discussing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Thanks for being here with your knee surgery. All right, anyone else? Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead, and I'm not closing anything. But I did want, there was one question about the underground utilities. Can we answer that question for the public comment that was made? Does anyone?
This is actually the first I've heard of such an underground utility district.
Okay, okay. Maybe whoever asked that question, I think it was Jim, you can come up afterwards and talk to our Public Works. Okay, so can you, Mari Sella, clarify tonight what we're exactly voting on? Because I know, I know there's been some confusion. We haven't voted on anything yet, just so you know that. Whoever was thinking we'd already voted on something.
So what is before the planning commission tonight is simply a general plan consistency finding. So pursuant to the government code, before property can be either acquired for construction of a building or a structure or acquired for street widening purposes, there needs to be a finding made that that project is consistent with the general plan. And so, as was laid out by staff and in the staff report, there were reasons given for why staff believes that consistency finding can be made for the various projects that were discussed tonight.
Okay, so as far as this particular project, with the concerns that there are, obviously, that have been voiced tonight, what can we do as far as that particular project tonight?
You could certainly, you don't have to make the general plan consistency finding. You can determine that it's not consistent and lay out the reasons why the commission doesn't believe that there's consistency. But just for the public to understand, tonight is just the general planning consistency finding. The actual capital improvement program and it going into the budget is going to be considered at the city council level, so that decision is not being made here tonight.
Okay, all right. So this.
Before, so the question was, how are that two items connected? Before it can be considered by the city council to put it into the budget or to move forward with the capital improvement program, there needs to be a determination that it's consistent with the general plan. So, for example, we couldn't move forward with a project where the general plan says you can't have X type of project, and then staff is proposing that type of project. You would go to the general plan and say, oh, that's prohibited. So that's the consistency finding that's, that's being brought forth for consideration.
Okay.
I, I have a, have a question, Chair. Can I ask a question?
Hang on a second. Let's go ahead and have any clarification that we can from staff as far as this particular project and as far as the consistency with the general plan. Just maybe another clarification on that for us as commissioners.
Yeah, so there are over a hundred projects in the CIP. And this being one of them, the Inez Road Improvements Phase Two. This is for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. And it's identified as a future years project. So maybe Amir or Ron, you could speak to the status of this particular project, the Inez Road Widening. It is in the CIP, but it's a future years project, which means we have time to, to take a look at it and study it.
So according to the, to the budget that is going to be reviewed by the city council next Tuesday, the Inez Road Widening Phase Two project is not funded at all. So the earliest you would see any, and it's even in that year, it's twenty-five, twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, even that year, there are no funding identified for this project. You can look in the book on Tuesday night, and I believe in the, in what was distributed on the agenda today, and that you will see there is no funding for that project anytime in the near future. What we're working on right now on Inez Road is the portion between Rancho Vista and the Duck Pond. So we are actively working on widening that section of the road between Rancho Vista and Rancho California Road. As far as from Rancho Vista all the way to La Paz or to Jedediah Smith, there are no plans right now. We are not working on that project. And even if you look on the CIP budget, it is in the CIP budget as a potential future project, but there are no funds identified for any work on that project, even in future years.
So really, we can't have questions going back and forth? Can you come up to the mic, then?
Is it possible for you to vote tonight to put that Inez project on hold of the general plan for review and upgrade to a more modern plan? Can you do that tonight? You're going to vote on going ahead with the general plan, and the general plan includes a major section that affects us that we are adamantly opposed to for safety and other considerations. So I'm asking, can you do that tonight where you put that portion of your general plan on hold for further consideration and then evaluation? Which is exactly what I asked in my thing. You really need to look at more modern ways of solving this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So tonight, the action is consistency finding on the draft CIP. And right now, the, the CIP sheet for Inez Road Phase Two Widening is consistent with the general plan. So you'd be making a decision on a recommendation of the draft CIP, and then it would go to the city council. And at the city council, you would have the opportunity to also speak there. We're going to forward these comments to the city council. There'll be a summary. But right now, the action you're taking tonight is on the draft CIP. And just a note about the general plan. So the general plan was last adopted in two thousand and five. And we're this fall going to be hiring a consultant to move forward with an update to the general plan. And part of that is looking at the circulation element and evaluating all of those connections, road widens, bridges that we didn't build based on what was recommended in two thousand and five. We'll take a look at, you know, what we're going to do about the future with these streets that have.
Okay.
So as a reminder, the public comment period is over. So, and it's at the discretion of Chair, whether she wants to reopen it, but it is closed right now. So I just want to make sure it's super clear that we're not amending the general plan in any shape or form tonight. It's truly just a matter of looking at the projects before the commission, for the commission to make the determination about whether or not you find that they are consistent with the goals, policies in the general plan.
Okay, thank you. And I think, I think it's great that you all have been here tonight. I think that puts, you know, that gives us information that maybe we didn't have or staff. So it's not for not you being here tonight. I hope you know that. But that's not exactly what we're voting on tonight. And so I just wanted to make sure and have the attorney state that of what we're voting on tonight. We're not voting to have it widened tonight. That's not what we're voting on. We're voting on whether it's consistent with the general plan. So at this time, comments from my colleagues.
Thank you. And like has been said, thank you guys for coming out. It's always nice to see bodies here and taking interest and voicing. And I feel your pain. I personally live in a residential area that has become a cut-through street. And as Ron knows, I spent many time years ago trying to address how we can change that or fix that and, you know, work with the city to do that. So I guess that's probably one of my first questions is, I understand what brought everybody here tonight because it's, it's listed as, as a project here that, that we're looking at, but without directly looking at the project, as the chair stated. Has any of this stuff been brought to Public Safety Traffic Commission for analysis on speed? I mean, not, not even the widening of it, but, but speed or other traffic calming measures or mitigation? Has that, has that been taken there before?
Yes, there's been multiple meetings with individual residents. I recognize many of them out here. And so we've had meetings with city council members. We've all, we've also brought to Public Safety Traffic Commission changes to the La Paz Roundabout. We have also brought the concerns regarding the speeding. We've discussed the means by which the speeds are set on Inez as well, that I could go into more detail if you'd like that. But to answer your question directly, yes, there has been, this has been brought up before. And we will take these comments, as City Attorney has mentioned, and we'll be putting these forward in another form again.
Okay, good. And I, don't take that as I was trying to kick the can down the curb. I wanted to make sure that if you weren't aware, there's another process. Because again, I've, I've sat right where you are, and I've, and I've tried to do that. So I am happy to hear that they've done that and appreciate staff taking that back as well. And Chair, I just appreciate the clarity that, you know, our vote tonight is not based on approving this project or this type of parameter, but really just the consistency. And I think it's very important that we're clear on that vote. So thank you.
Bob, anything?
Yeah, Ron, if you could, you know, speed limits, as you know, they're not arbitrarily set. We cannot set them arbitrarily. But there is a process that we have to go through, and if you could explain that process. And also, the type of road, that, the designation of the type of road also helps determine speed limits. Is that correct?
That's correct. All of our speed limits are based upon the California Vehicle Code, and it's based upon the eighty-fifth percentile of the speeds that are surveyed out in the, in these corridors. In other words, the traffic itself sets the speed limit. So speed surveys are done, it's looked at and said, okay, this is the eighty-fifth percentile of how fast people are going. Now, cities do have the ability, due to new California legislation, to move that speed limit down, round down instead of up. In other words, if we get something in the neighborhood of forty-three miles per hour, we can round down to forty and then even reduce it another five miles per hour. However, that is typically a, an action that the city council takes. So we take these speed surveys, and we take them to city council for them to decide upon. With regards to certain types, so there are certain types that are called, for instance, prima facie, we were able to reduce the La Paz speed down to twenty-five based upon the type of road it was and that it was reevaluated based on the roundabout coming in as to how it was functioning. And so therefore, that was changed as well. In the future, anytime measures are taken, whether it is a horse crossing, whether it is a change in speed, or as you saw recently, as the Coles mentioned before the meeting, there was changes to the roundabout with regards to signage, some chevrons, some striping. That allows a city to go in then and do a resurvey. If we don't have any substantial changes to a roadway, then we do the speed survey every seven years, if the road stays the same at all times. But as you have seen, there has been a lot of changes that have occurred on this corridor based upon accident data, meetings with the Sheriff's Department. And so because of these recent changes, most likely, the La Paz-Deportola-Inez corridor will be reevaluated once again. So it's been evaluated, and it'll be evaluated again based upon these changes to see, is it making? to see, is it making a difference? And then, of course, we'll take into account all of the comments tonight. Amir and I will take that back to our director, Pat, and we will discuss what are really next steps. And then we will see what council thinks about it.
Chair, can I just add one comment too? I know it's been mentioned, traffic commu and increased police presence, which always tends to help. I would just make the recommendation, if I can, to some feedback. It sounds like the early morning, the late time is not the issue there. To look at that presence maybe during the day when it mostly is. I know that had an impact on my street personally, when we were looking at certain times of the day. Initially, that presence was not necessarily the right time of day, so it didn't report back the way it needed to be. So I would just maybe kind of keep focus on that, that if they said the morning and nighttime are already congested, so there's not going to be a lot of these speeding issues, then maybe emphasize trying to get some presence or some studies at least done during the time of day where those speeding issues are taking place.
Thank you. Amir and I will note that.
Gary?
I don't have a lot to say. I certainly sympathize and empathize with the people here tonight and the problem they're facing. I think several things. The Traffic Public Safety Commission, I'm sure you've been before them already, but they really can, that's their charge, is to deal with traffic issues. Certainly, the council can decide what they want to include in the budget, in the program or not. And they can take things out and they can add them and that type of thing. We can't. As has been explained, and I know it's the same thing you've heard, but our charge is to decide whether this particular capital improvement project is compliant with the city's general plan. That's in law. We have to do that. We don't decide which projects go in. We don't decide which ones come out. We just either decide, is it compatible with our general plan or not? I know those issues were brought up by some of the folks tonight, that it may be, in their opinion, in conflict with what the general plan states. And that's a valid position. And it needs to be voiced and hashed out. But that's not our job to do that. We really need to decide whether it's in conformance or not. Certainly, as has been explained, there's no money in the project now. So it's at least three years away if that was the case. Long term, you've got a lot of time to work on that, to voice your concerns and see what sort of actions you can get. Short term, as has been explained by my colleagues and staff here, certainly the speed limit is something that can probably be attacked right away if there's enough uproar about it. So I don't know if that works or not, but it seems like, I've been in other cities where it abruptly changes from, say, a 45 mile an hour to a smaller 25 or 30 through a residential area. I don't, I'm not an expert on that at all, but it seems like that's a reasonable position to take. And unfortunately, the people who are using that road for cross-town transportation, they're not going to change probably. There's only, as far as I know, three or four direct north-south routes across the city. That's one of them. There's almost 115,000 people here. They're all in those four streets. That's going to be a problem for people going across town. So I don't know. That's a problem. The city hears constantly, traffic is the number one complaint that the city council hears. That's probably never going to change. But they are the ones that really need to hear that. And they have the owner's distinction of having to decide your interests versus the city's interests as a whole. That's a tough call in this case, because I can certainly understand your positions. As I said, though, our job is simply to decide whether it is compliant or not. There's a lot of projects in that list that probably aren't funded besides this one. So I hate to use the word wishlist, but it sometimes is. And things change, as you well know, so fast in this day and age now that who knows what can happen to that plan after it's adopted. So I know Bob wants to chime in here in a minute, but I just wanted to say, the program is big. There's, I think, 850 million. Is that what you said?
Over 818 million, which I think is the largest budget we've had.
That's a big budget. So this project isn't even funded out of that. So anyhow, I hope you understand our position and what our responsibility is. And we certainly have listened to your complaints. They're valid. I have had a personal experience as well with a high-speed limit on a road that I lived on. And I was very frustrated when the city wouldn't do anything about it. And they explained all the California speed laws and that and this, so I know that's probably not what you want to hear. But I hope that we can provide some sort of avenue for you to pursue your interest in this matter. Tonight's not going to probably satisfy you. Depends on how, if we go to a vote or not, if it passes. But I hope that you understand our position and where we're coming from and we have to deal with this. And as has been stated, your concerns will be forwarded to the appropriate people, city council. I encourage each and every one of you to let your city council members know how you feel about the issue. They are hearing it from a lot of people who are sick and tired of waiting in traffic. And so they're constantly trying to juggle this. You all know that. So I don't want to insult anybody by trying to do that. That's really what I had to say. And I hope that Bob, with his expertise in traffic safety, can maybe bail me out here.
I'm actually going to have Fernando.
Okay, yeah, I did want to say something. I wanted to thank everyone for coming. Your comments are very important. And I understand the frustration of people driving fast, and that's your community. I do have trailers, and I do understand how difficult it is to park in and out backing in your trailer. Also, I had a question for Ron. On the staff report, it says that the details are that the project is under Phase One, and then Phase Two will happen. What is the details of Phase One that the project is currently in right now? And what is Phase Two?
Okay, on, excuse me, on the CIP budget, there are two sheets. There is a sheet for Inez Road Phase One. So Inez Road Phase One is from Rancho Vista to the Duck Pond. And that work is being, we're actually in design right now to widen that section of Inez Road. There is a second sheet that's called Inez Road Phase Two. And if you read the description, the description says that Inez Phase Two would eventually be divided into two phases, Phase Two A and Phase Two B. Phase Two A would be between Rancho Vista and Santiago. And Phase Two B would be between Santiago and La Paz. But that's the one that's not funded, the Phase Two part. And it's not identifying, I mean, they're identifying unspecified funding in 2526. So even at that time, it's not a funded project right now.
Okay. Because I did see that detail and I didn't know the exact detail. And with that said, I believe that if we were to make consistency finding, that there is still time to work with the traffic commission to come up with a plan that's very specific in this area, in your community. So I feel by us moving forward and moving forward and finding a consistency with this, there isn't going to be any change within the next four years. And within the next four years, we can really study this area, or not us, but the traffic commission can really study this area and really look into what are the, how many accidents are happening, you know? What's the speed limit? What should it be? What does the community want? And I feel that we have time right now. So I feel confident and comfortable that finding a general plan consistency with this full CIP project will not impact this community because there won't be, we're not making a decision right now. I feel that if we move forward and find a consistency, that we will have time to really find out the true facts and the findings of what this area is. That's what I believe.
Thank you, Fernando. Did you have something else, Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, several of you brought up what is causing the volume of traffic on Inez, which is the backup on the freeway. And this budget, the CIP plan, does include all the work that's being done on the freeway. And if it's, if we find it inconsistent, we're killing that, and we don't want to kill that. That's what's going to solve a lot of this problem. And as you might guess, it's not a small project. It's been something, I think we started doing design work, what, at least 10, 15 years ago? I mean, it's an enormous project of which cities don't normally do. This city has taken upon itself since Caltrans wasn't going to do the project. We took it upon ourselves to design this, get permission to do it, and then go seek funding out, which, that funding, we've basically begged every place that we can for grants. And we've been able to obtain a substantial amount of money from the federal government as well as the state to do this. So we're probably maybe the first city in the state of California ever to build freeway. And the faster we can do that, the better the resolution is to not only this problem, but a whole lot of other traffic issues as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from my colleagues? Okay. So I wrote notes on every single one of your cards and what you said. And I want you to know that we hear you, for sure. And these will be passed on. And I drive that street because I live in Red Hawk. So I do drive through that street and I understand. I don't totally understand, obviously. I don't live there. But I can understand how frustrating that would be for you, when it's busy and when it's not busy, both times. So it's a real issue. And we hear that, we see that. So I just want you to know that. We appreciate you coming out and taking the time out of your evening to speak to us. We wish all communities would do that, right? And I think the last speaker said something that kind of hit me, where he said, this is an unfair burden that our community is taking on. And I think that's true. I think that's very true. So again, tonight, that's not what we're voting on, but I just want you to know that you're heard. And with that, can we go ahead and have the motion tonight? Is for a general plan consistency review of the proposed draft fiscal years 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program Long Range Project, number LR23-0139. So, and this is for consistency to the general plan.
Is that a motion, Madam Chair?
I'm reading it. I'm not making the motion and asking for a motion.
And the motion would be to move staff's recommendation on the item?
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I'll show move.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bob and a second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, 5-0. And thank you again, all of you, for being here tonight and speaking. I hope you understand what was done tonight. I know you're frustrated, but anyway. All right. Let's see. We have Commissioner Reports next. Let's start on Adam.
Sure. And the only thing I really wanted to report on, and I believe everybody did, I did want to thank staff and the efforts of Temecula Hospital for providing an opportunity for us to tour the facility out in Chino. I think it was very eye-opening, and I was glad to be able to see that. You know, we even said there, it's one thing to hear it, it's another thing to see it and, you know, be able to see the impact of what we were hoping to see. So that was very helpful and appreciative of the opportunity for that.
Bob?
I just want to say, it was very eye-opening. And it was all new information, which I think will be very valuable to us.
Okay. Fernando?
I also went. I liked it. Got to understand what the use was and how they operated. And we got a lot of information. So thank you, staff.
Gary?
Regarding yesterday's visit, I concur with everybody's statement. Very knowledgeable and well done. Thank you, staff, for getting that all squared away.
Yeah, I was proud of our commission for all of us attending. I think that was important for us to get that information and get as much information as we can about this project before it comes before us. All right, Commission Subcommittee Reports. Do we have any? I know we have one.
Yep, we have one. Commissioner Hagel and I met prior to this on updating some local ordinances around massage establishments, also smoke and tobacco shops. And then a new, which was new information to me, a new synthetic drug called. What is it? Kratom? Kratom, K-R-A-T-O-M, Kratom. I'd never heard of it, but it's kind of stemming and making its way into K-R-A-T-O-M. K-R-A-T-O-M. My understanding is it's like a, kind of similar to an opioid that people are looking to take to extend out their period of time before they need to go get their big fix on something else. So it's kind of scary to see. But we reviewed a couple of things that was, I think, moving everything as we are trying to move for overall public safety in our community across all three of those platforms.
What was shocking about this, I'll call it a drug, is that it's perfectly legal. It's for sale. You can go into a 7-Eleven or a variety of other stores, any smoke shop, and you can buy it. It does have an effect on you right away. And depending on how much you take, it can have an opposite effect on you. So it can be both an upper or a downer. And it's, you know, readily available throughout the city. And of course, like Adam said, I've never even heard of it before. So it was pretty much a big shocker to realize that this is something that's being sold today, so.
Yeah. And I mean, we commented earlier, and I would commend staff for catching this early. You know, we've seen opioid challenges already. Fentanyl is obviously one of the bigger ones. So to have something that hasn't yet made big news, not that we want to give it the big news, but we're catching that beforehand and looking to keep that away from, you know, hopefully as many people in our community.
That's great. Anything we can tighten up to make our city safe is really important. Thank you for your work on that. Any other Subcommittee Reports? No? Okay, our Community Development Assistant Director?
Nothing tonight. I even asked Luke if he had anything to communicate.
All right, thank you. And Public Works, Ron. And thank you, Amir, for being here tonight. It was really helpful to have you here. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. No problem.
Yeah.
I think we've hit on all the projects tonight. But one that wasn't talked about was the Nicholas Road Extension. That is actually underway. Construction started, so we saw some photos of some grading. So that's a big project, as you know, that the Salmer's Bend Development has been conditioned for. So if you're out that way, I know Adam, you live out that way, there's definitely construction going on starting this week.
Thank you, and thanks for being here for all these projects and for all that Public Works does, for sure, for our city and keeping our city moving as well as we can, right, and safe. Any other comments before we adjourn? It's a long meeting for us. Okay, we're going to adjourn until Wednesday, June 21st at 6:00 PM here. Thank you, everyone. See you then.